Put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice and rule.
Can you put a call please?
Trustee Petrich, here. Trustee Garrett, here. Mayor Martin.
Here. No, okay. I hate to say this, but I don't have any minutes. I remember reading them.
I read them, I didn't print them. I don't have one. Do you have an agenda?
I have an agenda.
Do you have an agenda for me?
No, I don't need one. I read it. So I thought the whole point was not to waste paper, so I didn't print it either. I read it.
Yeah, I usually don't, but you're...
You can share it with me.
Intermotion to approve the July 9, 2018 board minutes.
Still moved?
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Additions, deletions, modifications?
Yep, look good.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion refused. Presentation, petitions, communications, general question period, members of the community. We have no one here tonight, we'll go on. Report from the Coast Enforcement Officer, we've all been talking to his report. Twenty-nine Pine Street has been cut, has been, has been cleaned up.
Oh, over here?
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to check that.
Yeah, they were there and they took out two trailer fulls of stuff.
Yeah, well, I talked to the guy last week and as soon as he got approval, they were gonna have it done, but...
And there's a couple of the signs up there. There's a for sale sign and that Trivet?
Trivet, he's the agent that's selling it. Also the property maintenance people.
Okay.
So that grass is long again, so how long ago was it cut?
Just this week.
Which one?
One thirty-nine elm, it's on my list.
No, Pine Street.
We're talking about Pine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Pine.
Well, it says here on the top of your list, one thirty-nine elm has been cut and property sold.
It has?
That's what your report says.
It's right next to the village dump site there, that house?
Yeah, yeah, that one.
That's been cut?
I think that's, uh, was not a Canadian.
Canadian, that old one.
He's been in here a couple times.
Well, pardon, but you did all the front and all the back, since they bought it. They just bought it here this past month.
Yeah, he was, uh, it was something he had to do with the foundation, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, he spoke with Mike.
Yeah, there's a, something with the water there also.
Lines broke one in from the street.
Yeah.
Oak Street. And that, that's coming along, they hauling out that, uh, on Oak Street.
Did the fire, uh, the wire?
Wire property?
Yeah.
Yes, that one up there. Looks different.
The other one on Oak Street, that's a court case, you've gotta return to court here on the twentieth.
Yeah. And you had that, uh, you got that complaint from your neighbor?
Right.
About burning up there? You got it, you got it?
Yeah, I went up there and looked and I, I didn't go around the back of the house, but on the front side, I couldn't see where they were burning.
I can't, I don't know where they're burning either. She seems to think they are, but it could be someone else who's having a campfire in the neighborhood.
There's a stack of pallets up against the garage, but I don't know that they're burning anything up there.
Oh, I don't know.
She said that they were burning pallets and it was like ten feet high in there.
So using accelerants to get it started. Yeah, I can't see. Her house is in the way, I can't see over there.
That's scary. It's as dry as everything is.
Yeah, I know.
You gotta use the gasoline to get those hardwood pallets to burn.
She should become a fire department.
Yeah, but our house is, well, it's true.
But that's the thing, if it's burning, what you should do is call it, I guess, call the fire department.
Yeah.
Well, can someone let her know that then?
We can call her tomorrow, let her know. That way if she calls the fire department, then they come out.
Give me your number.
And I'll probably call Mike.
Yeah, probably.
Well, nope, when they come out, the fire chief is in charge.
Yeah. Yeah.
So he knows, we've talked about this, his next step is to call the police.
Yeah.
If they don't put it out, we've talked, I've talked to him about it.
Yeah.
If he goes and they don't wanna put it up, his job, put the fire out, call the police. Because he's in charge.
Yeah.
If he goes to a call, there's not much I can do.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I can tell him what I'd like him to do, but in case of a fire, he's the one that makes that decision.
Maybe somebody should drop a paper off or bring a paper with the restrictions are in the village here, you know, size and...
Well, she did.
She did, yeah, she got one of these here and to put it on their front door, so they would be aware of that.
All right, so Mike, you got a lot to look at.
Yep.
Wednesday and Thursday. Hey, anything else for Mike?
Thought you might be bored.
Anything else, any questions, anything for Mike? We'll get this one going. All right. You're with me? I gotta thank everybody in the county and a whole lot of people here in the community, so just...
Please do.
Here we go. Greetings and welcome to your August 2018 Village Board Meeting. After a very successful village fest held on August 11th at the Billero Park on River Street, we would like to thank those special businesses and people who support these efforts to make this a unique day and make it a reality. Stewart's, as always, showed their community's support in supplying the ice cream, which is the highlight of the day and enjoyed by all participants visiting in the village. Everyone enjoys a great dish of ice cream and the visiting and conversation that go along with it. Thanks to the Stewart's Corporation for their continued participation in our annual Village Appreciation Festival. Kenny Drugs for their continued support, Dunkin' Donuts for their help. A big thanks to our exhibitors, the Champlain Library Organization, that really represents our community and would like to see more participation in the many library activities. The Clinton County Health Department, who was there with a wealth of information regarding their community programs, and of course, our local heroes, Champlain Fire Department and Champlain Moore's EMS, who also attended. We would like to thank Dr. Celine Paquette for having the Samuel D. Champlain Museum open for the event. What a wonderful presentation of local history, and we encourage everyone to stop in and view the exhibits and learn more about this area we call home. A thank you goes out to Border Patrol Officer Chad Downey, who stopped by briefly, showed his support for this community event. Chad visits with us every year and has a good time at the event. A grateful thank you to the village staff, Juanita and Mary, who organize and make sure everything is ready for the day. The Village DPW, Mike Joliker, who makes sure the park is in good shape and handles all of those necessary duties to smooth out any problems. A personal thank you to my family members who helped to provide food, keep the volunteers fed and happy as the day goes on. Thanks also to the race observers who made sure the runners were headed in the right direction and to all those individuals who made the day memorable. I'd like to thank the village board members who helped organize and were at the event, helping, keeping things running smoothly. I'd like to thank Erin Souza for her help with the serving, and of course Milo the Wonder Dog, who provided a lot of entertainment. I'd like to thank Calvin Castine, hometown cable, for his coverage. That is important to keep the community aware of such events as our village fest, and he covers the village events very well. I'd like to thank Nikki Malinsky, Tricia Rye, for providing the child, the children's activities. As always, they spend a lot of time here in the village doing these activities and doing a wonderful job. The bouncy house courtesy of Woodman of the World, very attractive plaything for the kids, the Clinton County Sheriff's Department with their traffic control for the 5K run. This event would be very difficult to have if we did not have the generous support of the community businesses and individuals offering their time and efforts. We highly recommend supporting local businesses that make this and many local events possible throughout the year. A generous and a very heartfelt thank you to all of them. We sent pictures, don't we send pictures to Stewart's and things like that to...
We should.
I thought we did.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have in the past, they certainly have.
Well, let's, I think we have pictures.
Mary has some great shots.
And, you know, when we write our thank you letters, let's include a couple pictures for them, I think, I think they would enjoy that. As always, thank you for your time. Your turn.
My turn?
Your turn.
Well, thank you Mayor for pulling together that great event. You put a lot into that.
Great time, yeah, great time.
Well, we all work together, but you do, you do a lot of it also. Couple of upcoming events, there is music in the park this Sunday at 6:00 PM with Tracy Decost, Ron Gregoire, and Jeff Winnick. The dance class registration was held yesterday. We had a fantastic turnout of little ones to sign up for dance, and there's another registration tomorrow afternoon. Farmer's market is continuing for a few more weeks, and the rowing will continue to be 6:00 PM on Fridays, and the youth rowing program is 1:00 PM on Sundays. And I'd also just like to say thanks to Mike for all you do, but I really, really like those new benches, and they look beautiful there, and I thank you for putting those in. Thank you to Amy for getting that grant, but they just are fantastic, overlooking the revert, just really showcases what a beautiful spot we have, so.
And the garden. And the garden.
And the garden, yeah.
People were commenting, I swear to God, it's a garden.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Amy?
So, to pick up on the benches, yes, thank you for doing that. So Eastern Adirondack Health Network, again, I really wanna give a shout out to them who do a ton for the community as, as a whole. I did apply for another opportunity for the kayak canoe launch, but we did not get that. So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna break it up and apply with a couple sources instead of having one person pay all, and then, you know, emphasize as I did in the first round of both of those, the in-kind service of the community clearing the space, you know, for where that's to go, but I'm thinking that possibly if we break it up, then it's not such a big chunk from just one person. Also, I give a shout out to CBPH Foundation, again, who gave us the funds for the hip hop dance, and, you know, can't say enough with these organizations that keep saying yes as, as they are requested for funds to do these things. I think there are still a lot more other opportunities out there to continue to enhance what we, we have, and the feedback is incredible, and I think if we just keep hammering at some of these opportunities that are out there, we'll continue to see our different dreams met, you know, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Whatever opportunities we have and grant money that can come in here, it's better here than going somewhere else.
Absolutely.
And we can certainly...
I want to become the next $10 million area bid captain.
I know.
Boy, there's a lot of work.
I saw that eye roll, Mike. I saw that eye roll.
There's a lot of work that goes on now.
It does, it does. Someday.
Okay, thank you. Does the report from the clerk treasurer, please?
Um, everyone has their July expenses revenue reports.
Everything looks great.
Yeah, thanks.
We got a good start.
There's no area in danger that we need to be aware of? Nothing? All right. Let's pay the bills.
Okay, we do have, I, I would like to do a transfer for the amount that we have to pay for the grants, the INI study and for the blower studies. So if we could do a transfer from fund balance G599 to G1440.1 of $19,425.
Nineteen four forty-five?
Four twenty-five.
Okay, Mayor, could we call this, this, this guy tomorrow? Is it Tito or whatever his name is, that is the project manager for the INI?
Tio? Yeah.
It's, it's not Tito, it's somebody else.
Okay.
And see how we can, what we need to do to get some of this money coming back this way. Thank you. Okay. Intermotion to approve the transfer.
Go for it, Amy, I'll second it.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'm not gonna pass it. I'll make a motion. We'll get on the board so we can discuss it.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
I'm not in favor of transferring any more money till we get some kind of answer. We have been nailed before, and I'm not interested in getting nailed again.
Okay, on this, uh, let me bring this back up here, let me find my, I sent them an email.
Yep.
And I think I copied everybody.
Yeah.
Did they respond?
Yes. And today, Friday, I got some things that I shared with Mike about the blowers. It's this schematics of...
Break down what's going in there.
Of how the blowers are gonna fit into that, into that spot. Nothing specific. Today, I received a lot of information on the INI project. So much so that I really not, I transferred it, forwarded it to Mike as well, but I, there's just so much material there. And there's about three sections of just nothing but pictures. And after a while, you, how many different pictures of a manhole and somebody standing there working down in it can you, I mean, you know. But there were some pictures of the, uh, when they did the smoke testing, where some of the problem areas were, and there is still more material that's supposed to come to us about the INI, which is the, which is the one that right now we are spending most money on, putting that forward, which we will eventually get back through that $30,000 grant, plus our 20%, match that we've pretty much taken care of with our in-kind services. The one that I'm, the one that I'm asking for more information from this group is on the blowers, because in conversation with Mike and Woody, our blowers are begging for time. One is getting very loud and the other's kinda wired up just to, just to keep it running. So I was told that June 28th email stated contract documents and plans are being prepared for an internal review and provided to the village before the end of July, so a resolution could be passed in August to go to a public bid. At this point, and I related this to the engineers, at this point, we have received nothing on that end, and that my board was not going to be happy with these billings that without information coming our way, I don't think that money should be going their way. So you'll notice on your warrant, on the, on the, on the water, on the wastewater fund, that there is two, there are two, number, voucher number 59.
Yep. $19,000.
It is, uh, it is, it is up to the board's discretion. We can vote to pay this and hold the checks until we get some response, or we can table that payment until the next meeting. It's up to the board.
So between what we transferred last month, plus this month, it puts us over $30,000. Frankly, after what we are going through with the town and everything, I am very leery to put more money forward to another engineer company with promises that don't come back to us.
I agree with you 100%.
And I think we would be irresponsible to give any more money without what is needed in response, and the concern here is it needs to get done.
Yes.
And all these promises that they've made, where are they?
At best, right now, you're looking at a resolution for the September meeting, unless we have a special meeting later this month, if the information should appear.
And I have no problem with that.
And we're, no, neither do I, but we're still looking at November or December before the things, I mean, there's a six to eight week turnaround here from approval to receiving this stuff, and quite frankly, I'm not 100% sure that those motors will last that long.
Heat's really kind of, hot weather, boys, tough one.
Yeah, I mean, it's already running the plant with the doors open and trying to keep it cool, so. So I have no issue with taking that money out of the warrant and holding it until we receive information, and if the information we receive is before the September 10th board meeting, then we can go from there. I would like to table, I would like to see us table that for now.
I don't mind doing that, but can I clarify something from my own understanding?
Sure.
Because we keep putting these together, but in fact, we're talking about two different things.
Two different things.
So the INI is $30,000, the blowers is the $50,000.
Right.
Okay, so keep in mind that there are two different pots of money, and it really, we shouldn't be looking at it as one bill. It's actually two different things, and I think we're more concerned, and should be more concerned about the blowers, because that's more essential.
At this point, yes, but the money that is being, the money that is being billed to us is for the INI as much.
Is it, does it come as one bill from Barton La Judas?
No, no, we have two separate ones.
It comes as two, so just keep in mind that we do, it is two separate things that we're talking about here.
Yes.
We talk about it, I feel like we're talking about it as if it's one.
But isn't, isn't this a study supposed to give us funding for the blowers?
It's supposed to give the information to...
No, no, the study is INI.
Okay.
That's $30,000. The blowers was as a result of our designation as our energy community.
Okay.
That's $50,000.
Okay.
Okay, so it really is, there are, it is two separate things. I don't mind tabling it, because we haven't gotten either one in yet, but the INI is a little further back than the blowers, 'cause that money was awarded, well, we've been working on that process longer.
Okay.
Okay, and Greg and I had, have had conversations about how to get that money coming, because there are a lot of hoops to jump through, and there are a lot of different things that we're waiting for and things to have to line up just right. I don't mind tabling it, but just keep in mind that it really is two separate things, and I think sometimes we talk about it as if it's one, because it's the same engineering field.
Okay.
Okay?
So the replacement of the blowers, what do we need to do with that?
We need to get some information from them with the blowers that they are suggesting so that we can put them out to bid.
Okay, all right, so I see what you're saying now, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we had, we had, we had a phone call about that with Nicerda and Barton La Judas, and there are a lot of, there are a lot of steps, you know, and I think we both feel that things are moving too slowly.
Yes.
But, but we are trying to do that. I mean, I've got, I've got my notes here, it's...
A lot of the things that are supposed to be coming are away from that office, the scope of the work and the budget and all of that stuff, that has to come to us, but that's gotta be done, I think, primarily by the engineering group.
And we still haven't been approved for this $50,000?
Yes, we have.
Yes, we have.
Oh, we have final?
Yes, we have, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
And Nicerda provides 25% seed money, once the contract is executed and uploaded.
Yes.
But the engineers really need to be doing that. We're not experts, we don't, we don't know how to write those things.
Absolutely.
So we feel like, well, I shouldn't speak for you, I feel like they're really being slow in this. I mean, their bid documents and their specifications and their, these metric workbooks and there are all these things that I don't even know what they mean.
Right, so if we hold their money, they might be a little more responsive, but...
Right, but, but keep in mind, the blower aspect of the $19,000, it's not all the $19,000, it's not the blower.
The blower bill is only $3,500.
Right, so I just wanna make sure that, that we're all talking about the same thing.
All right, so the 3585 is for the...
We can take that out, that's for the blower upgrade, that's for the blowers.
Right, I mean, you could hold...
And the 15840 is for the INI study.
And that's the $30,000 is gonna be applied to that. I, I don't mind if we table it, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that there were two separate issues here.
Two separate issues.
Okay, so thank you for that, I appreciate that. So I don't have any problem paying the blower portion, but I do have a problem paying the engineer portion till we have the information.
That's fine, that's, I'm fine with that.
That we can actually have an intelligent review and not come in five minutes before a meeting.
Yeah. I'm absolutely fine with that, and maybe that will send a message that we're getting impatient.
That was my response, that you can't have something that comes in at the last minute and expect the board to review this material for a resolution.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think that the earliest is going to, unless we have a special meeting, it would be the September meeting.
Well, I can do, you know, as long as you just give me a little warning in my schedule, I can come early, I can, you know, accommodate whoever, I just need to know.
Okay, so what do you wish to do here? Do you wish to approve this transfer or not approve this transfer?
Can I amend my motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the 3585.
Table the 15840.
And table the 15,00840.
I think that 35, the 3585, I think we're under contract to pay that anyway.
Are, are you saying table the transfer? Is that what you mean?
Do you need to transfer for the 3585? I know you need to transfer for the, the 15840. Do you need a full transfer for that, the smaller portion though? So G1440. Uh, no, you don't need a transfer for the 1440. Oh, yeah, you do, yeah, 'cause you're, no, you're fine, you got $5,000, so we're fine. Two only, two though. Now, that account is hurting a horrible bit. Yes. So I make a motion to pay the 3585.
And to table the...
And table the transfer.
And the invoice.
And the invoice for the INI study.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion here? I think that works. Call please.
Trustee Champlain, uh, Trustee Petrich.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, so 15 is tabled. And the 35 is paid. All right. Now the warrant.
We have additional invoices to add to the warrant of nine thousand six fifty-seven thirty-one. Less the EV Connect bill, what's that?
Do we get a sheet of that?
Yeah, I put it on your desk.
No?
I put it on your desk.
Well, the only thing on the desk that I had was my.
Losing it, Mayor.
I guess I am.
What was on your desk?
This is a minute and the codes officer report. Well, this was here in front Tommy's place.
Um, no, I gave him my note.
Oh, yeah.
You want him back?
Thank you. Oh, if you want him, you can keep him.
Thank you. Thank you.
There you go. No, is that?
Okay.
You want to look at it?
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, warrant, we have additional invoices of nine thousand six fifty-seven thirty-one less the EV Connect bill of five ninety because I haven't gotten a reply from them. And the one invoice that we're not paying, fifteen thousand eight forty for a warrant of forty-six thousand nine seventy-one eleven.
Forty-six.
Nine seventy-one eleven.
Nine seventy-one eleven.
I make a motion to pay with the additional amount in the total of forty-six thousand nine seventy-one eleven.
Yeah, have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So what is happening with the EV charger? Can you fill us in on this?
Go ahead. Me too?
Yeah.
So it hasn't been, it's never worked.
Right.
Um, we got one step further. It, it'll go to charging but then not charge. So we're one step closer to it working, but it's still not working. So we're not going to pay it until it's working.
So I've sent out emails regarding this and they keep asking me what the next step is and which I explained to her, tell her exactly what it says. So we put in another ticket. So I've been waiting since Friday for a reply and I still don't have a reply.
And then once they say that they've done something, then I contact my friend that's got an electric car. I make them, I ask her to go down, which she very nicely does, sends me a picture of how it's still not working.
So once it's working, what is the cost of this to us?
Well, we're not charging for the electricity.
Right.
Uh, and we, so we don't know because it hasn't worked yet.
Okay.
This was all by grand money, so.
Well, that's what I thought, so why is there a bill from them? That's my question.
Because there's a software charge, oh, a two-year software charge. So there is, there is a cost.
And it has a cost. Okay.
So it's this five seventy. Yeah, so that's.
But we haven't had it working in two years, so we don't think any of that.
Yeah, we didn't know that.
Our warrant is actually thirty-six thousand nine seventy-one eleven. Not forty-six, sorry.
Thirty-six?
Yeah, thirty-six nine seventy-one eleven. Okay, you're taking off on the forty-three. Yeah. Alright, make a motion to pay the warrant in the total amount of thirty-six thousand nine seventy-one eleven.
Second.
Okay. Now, any further discussion? Like those on this, on the general fund here. NCC Systems three nineteen oh six for a new camera water plant.
No idea.
All we got was, did they put a new, do we know that they put a new camera down there?
I don't know, it wasn't here when they were here, I don't, I don't know.
Where is that?
It's on general fund, voucher number seventy-three.
Yeah, I saw that.
A sixteen twenty point two.
It says.
Because that, the water plant.
It says.
Is that online? Do we have images of the water plant?
No, they gotta tie that into the, unless they, unless they did it, but they gotta tie it into the fiber to come back.
That's why we got internet down here so that we could get those images.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think they've been here yet to set that up.
Well, I don't know why we got a, why they put a new camera in there.
It's from February twenty-sixth. Technician installed new camera, programmed tough switch in office and downloaded necessary firmware for camera upgraded, also installed switch. Only billed for new switch, rest is warranty. Work order is complete, thank you for choosing NCC Systems.
So that was when that camera had burnt up? Power surge or whatever, they replaced the camera and it looks like they added some extra recharge to put it in, that's what it appears to be.
It says three six, three nineteen six.
If the camera was covered by the warranty, the upgrade or whatever they did, that's not covered as a warranty?
Apparently not.
That's three hundred and nineteen dollars?
And six cents, that says that was for material, they didn't charge for any labor.
But if it's under warranty, there should be no charges.
It seems like the camera should have been under the warranty.
Only billing for the new switch, rest. The new, only, yeah, only billing for new switch, rest is warranty. So apparently that's the cause for the switch.
Wow.
I have no idea, I know, if it didn't work this winter, we called, Jerry Head came up, they said the camera was no good, I don't know, whatever, it just wouldn't work, whatever, they're going to try to get the images off from it. And they ended up changing the camera. That was.
So do we know if it even works now?
I don't know. That particular one, I don't know. That one records down there. You're supposed to fix it so it comes back to here now that we have fiber.
Right. So do we look at any of these cameras at all, ever?
Yeah, all, all the ones from here we do, yes.
Have they looked at? Okay.
Because we've had them multiple times, it went out, we've had them come and fix them.
Okay.
And at least they called the number of banks to look at the tapes and.
I just pulled some information out there tonight, actually, that our, somebody stole our catalog. It's all on camera at Dunkyard.
Really?
Yeah.
Why would you steal a catalog with no key?
At the clock on Friday night, I got it all on camera.
And we can identify?
I believe so.
No, that's, I don't, I don't mind.
There's, yes, I, I, I just, the lock disappeared tonight, so I looked back through the camera and there's three individuals there and you can see them reaching and taking the lock, so.
Okay.
We're going to look into that.
Were they leaving things there or just stopped and?
No, no, kids.
Alright. Well, if this is just for the switch, I guess we're okay with this, but still.
Like that's an expensive switch.
That's an expensive switch.
Can we get more information on that or not?
Sure can. Can we call them tomorrow or outcall them tomorrow and get more of an explanation? We can approve it, but we'll hold the check until we're happy.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Six months ago.
Yeah, I know, but it's alright.
They must just build it now, if you're right.
Yeah, I know.
Right, so how important is it?
Lecture.
Right.
I'll just get into it.
I want to buy stock in that switch company.
I know they changed another camera too that was bad. Won't really know the bill for much right now, I think they wanted to.
The whole thing down there, the water plant was kind of a.
Temporary, that was supposed to be a temporary thing they put in.
Temporary, where you put the recorder in a box and leave it there all winter.
Right.
And then if you got a problem, you gotta get out and pull the chip and come up here and put the chip.
Bring the laptop down and look at it down there.
Yeah.
Uh, but that was temporary to get us by until we got internet, which we have.
Mm-hmm. And that was what was holding everything up. Well, we'll have it hooked up as soon as the internet gets put in there. Well, the internet's been there, so.
So how many cameras have been replaced?
Well, that one and they upgraded the camera. I think they have upgraded to one of the bolt launch.
Yeah.
Um, went to a different style. And we had a few others that gave us issues, but the, like the irises stuck, they reset them and they, they seem to be okay. We had so many power surges, lightning and, and surges that, that sometimes, that's how the first one burnt up, they just figured it was a power surge.
Are bolts in the playground working?
Yes. I checked them tonight, they're working. They're all working right now. Although I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm going down there, I can't answer, it was a, it was a water plant.
Okay.
Because it's recorded down there, it's not, can't see here, so I check them right along.
Is that, is that motion detected or is it constant?
Motion. I don't remember, people say it either way, but I don't remember.
Is that something that we could do?
No.
These Prescott bills, are we being reimbursed for these?
Uh, probably, some of them probably, probably not all of them, but yes. There's a lot of material bought, bought for the, for the extra lines here.
Yeah.
The ones that won't be, they're separate ones, uh, the bands, repair bands.
Okay, well, there's still some on the water fund page or? A saddle, ragers, saddle, plant.
Yeah, that's water plant, water plant, not the plant.
Plant.
Plant will be repaired, that's ours, but the other stuff's all, should be tubing, should be quite a bit on there.
Okay. Alright. And we have the two thousands back?
I gotta get it tomorrow, we can have time to set, we will get it. I don't go through anything, we have a question.
Okay. So anybody discussion on the warrant? Phone call, please.
Trusty, Trusty Garrett. Aye. Trusty McFedgey. Aye. Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, Mike, return.
Yeah, nothing tonight, I didn't, I didn't really do too much the last month.
Yeah, right.
Um, I didn't do a, I'm still, I'm just fine, that's the way it is. Uh, well, we've had a few water breaks. We did some ditching in the grasses finally, we've got it established where it's, most of it's coming. I can't remember, we've probably had three water breaks maybe since our last meeting. Uh, I'm guessing I don't even remember to be honest with you.
To downstream to a bank.
Yeah, we get about one every ten days average, that's probably, I think about number thirty-two. Right now, we're in the, we got the back wall with salt shed. I'm waiting for solids, placed an order a little, a couple of weeks ago, so we can get that, get that next. We're in the, um, getting ready for paving mode here. Culverts and, and cutting shoulders and, and another week they'll be here and we're not even ready, so. Um, that's, right now it is going towards, uh, prepping for, for asphalt. Hoping if I can get some done, I can get some done now, and I've got a lot of work on a few streets to get them ready and hopefully they'll be coming back. They did line a couple of streets today, they called me, they did, I think Elm Church, I think they strike today and then they're going to be doing Prospect too, but I think they're waiting until, until the town's done. They're doing asphalt in Prospect right now, to the top of the hill. Other than that, we've just keeping up with whatever we can keep up with, keep trying to move forward here. It's definitely been, it's definitely been busy. We've been in so many directions that the phone rings and it changes, so I can't even, uh, my plan, my plan for the rest of this week is we're down one guy, but my, my plan is to, um, try to get ash line, try to get the shoulders cut and take out a, a culvert that's bad and, and move one. Uh, hoping this fall I can do some ditching and get that water bit in the corner of, of the ash line. And then I'm going to see, we may move to, to Meadow, I got, I got a manhole to fix, where they have the end. And then we're going to come back and keep working on spruce and, uh, spruce and pine. Um, but there's a lot of work there before we can put asphalt down.
Spruce is nearly ready?
No, one side is, well, part of the, one side of the road is the other side, I've got the drainage all the way up through cut into the intersection on the corner with drains, so there's so much work there, I, I figured we'd go to Ashline try to get one of the easy ones, easier ones done. Um, so we can, if we can get one of them done now, then hopefully if the county comes back and whenever they get back here, we can hopefully have the other ones done. I got a coordination task to dig out Sanchez's lawn, which I'm, depending on the weather, I'm going to try to do tomorrow. And then, uh, we've got to change a culvert out, down by the curve. So it's, uh, as things roll in, we just switch directions and try to keep going with it.
So your culvert, you were just talking about at the end of, or manhole, which was it, at the end of Meadow?
Meadow, yeah, it's a sewer manhole, it's alternated.
Is it in the turnaround section down there?
In the road, right in the road on the end.
So.
It's before the turnaround.
Okay, so what's the deal with the turnaround now that's got, um.
To the middle there?
Cones up, saying private property, don't cross this, and did we not pave that turnaround?
No, we, we got, it used to be a hydrant.
I don't know, in there.
There used to be a hydrant and they moved it to the side. We're allowed to use it, but the owners don't want anybody else using it, they won't let anybody turn around there.
And is that their property to say that?
I'm not giving any legal advice, I don't know.
Okay, well, I think we need to look into that.
Uh, we have a, just a, um, I don't know that we have ever signed anything with the owner. He still owns that piece of property. We put some, some stuff in there so we can turn the sumpow around. And that's when they move those, when they move those cones. When we plow, we move the cones, and then when we turn around and drive out, we put the cones back. That was part of the, part of the deal that we could use that, rather than back that sumpow all the way back through Meadow Lane to get out of there.
Right, but the road is a village road.
Only up to that last trailer.
Right.
Where it goes out, where the cones at the end of the road. You get that area that's, that's wider there, broadened, that we drive in and turn the sumpow around and come back out, that is not our property. We are using that with a, with an agreement with the property owner.
Okay.
That's the only way that we could, we could reasonably put those trucks and turn them around. And the reason that they got the cones up there is he doesn't want everybody in there turning around. Which there is, I, I'm sure, I swear that that's the busiest street in the village. And we have put a couple of signs up there. Uh, at the request of some residents that live up there, we put a speed limit sign and we put a children's playing sign and I don't know, at least with the signs and the things up there, that gives us a little more, a little more, uh, theft, if you will, when we get the sheriff involved. And he, the sheriff does go up there quite often for other reasons, but is up in that street. So, but that's why, and it's, it's still private property.
Good, I've never seen the cones, so I only go down the winter for the decorating contest.
Well, you, a lot of times, they used to try to move them, so it's, it's tough when you've got, you're pushing snow and you gotta get out and move the cones. Push the snow and then put them back. Uh, so a lot of times, you know, sometimes depending who was there, they used to move them for us. Sometimes they didn't, sometimes they got pushed over the bank and I got a phone call. But it's, it's tough, I mean, when you're getting out, every time you got a chance of falling down. You're plowing up, there's no sand, there's not even any sand there yet, you know what I mean? But most of the time, they've been pretty good about, through the storm, about moving them. Sometimes not so much, but, and it depends who's staying there, you know?
I think it's better now than it was in the past.
Sometimes they get frustrated when you make however many trips and sometimes they get pushed over than I get. My phone rings.
Anything else for Mike? Questions, just don't throw anything out of these? Correspondents?
Uh, correspondence from New York State DOT regarding the chips funding.
Got enough in the bank to do some blacktopping. Did you get this, you got, you got that?
I didn't see it, no. That's all I have, I know about these two sheets, so I don't know where, look, maybe I got a part of it, I didn't see it.
I think they're copies for everything.
That's sure, that's sure.
They, they hide that from you.
Okay, your business, bus stand government conference. Want to approve up to how many?
Um, up to sixteen.
Okay, and we have.
Probably won't, that many people probably won't go, but up to sixteen.
And we, we notified the zoning and planning and?
No, I'm waiting to get approved for this before I.
Okay.
And some people have already gotten to me, I'm already saying that they do want to come because some people have received emails or their, their postcards in the mail.
Well, this is a good opportunity for us to get the, to get the hours that they need on those, on both of those boards, zoning and planning. So. Mike, you going?
Yeah.
Mike, you going?
I believe so.
Okay, look at the agenda, see if it's worthwhile, so what do you?
I'm working on right now, I'm trying to get Robert his hours, his license, until the end of the month, his end of hours.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'm working to see if I can use, there's some coming up, but it's, two months past is renewal time. I'm working to see if they'll extend it.
Alright.
If not, we're gonna, we got some away from somewhere.
Does he have to start it all over or is that?
If we don't, if they say no, we're gonna have to send him wherever, Albany, wherever to get hours.
For the school?
To, before the end of August, to get, to keep his license. So I'm working on that, I've made, I've got some phone calls in, um, actually tomorrow I gotta call him back. Most time they're pretty good about it, a lot of times they'll give you a license, they'll give you six months. Even if they give us two months, because there's some classes coming to Peru, but they're in October.
Yeah. Yeah.
And his runs out in August, so if they can extend it two months, get him signed up now, and then, you know, say.
If that's, if that's where we're going to, if that's where we wanna place him, then we gotta get the license.
Water, well, another story is water license, so we're gonna, you know. And it's hard because each seven and a half credits, well, a class gets six.
Yeah.
So you gotta go to no matter what, you try to find something online even, you could get a couple credits for it. Not always, seems like the way they said it, you can't get quite enough.
Alright, so what, what do we need to approve here?
Um, up, up to sixteen people, which would be six hundred and forty dollars.
Okay, six hundred and forty dollars, which will, depending on how many decide that they would like to go, but it's necessarily have this planning done, so. Need a motion to approve.
It's almost.
Up to.
Sixteen.
Okay, six hundred and forty dollars.
Forty-two.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call please.
Trusty, trusty. McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye, you gonna put the signs in front of it?
Next time, next time I'm gonna do this.
Okay, um, next story, new business, uh, Lycan Ball Meeting. I think we should, as we have in the past, uh, I think we should send two folks to this meeting in Lake Placid. Uh, Lycan is a great source of information, we use their resources quite a bit, and uh. Uh, it's, it's certainly a worthwhile, a worthwhile week, four days I guess, event. Like send one of the staff and like send a trustee. So.
I would like to go, because I looked at the program and there's a lot of stuff that they're offering that I don't.
It's four days long?
Yeah.
I can't.
You start Monday afternoon, isn't it Monday afternoon and Thursday afternoon?
Actually, Monday, yeah, it is Monday afternoon.
Yeah, Monday afternoon, um.
Monday night, Tuesday, Wednesday night? And then Thursday?
Thursday night is there and award dinner and.
All, they're all held at night, at nighttime?
No, it's all day long.
Class during the day.
All day long, they have different sessions all day long?
And then you come back Friday morning.
Friday morning, okay, so it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, four nights, plus all the meetings and meals and all that good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the total cost for two?
Nineteen eighty-six thirty-six. Which is it, with a discount, as she's, this would be her first, her first time doing this, it's a discount.
Okay.
And where does that come out of? For school, night school? Which cap?
It comes out of um, eight thirteen twenty-five point eleven.
And did the sixteen hundred, we, the six hundred we just approved come out in the same place? Six forty plus nineteen twenty-five? No, the other one comes out of school, the other one comes out of um, a. Nine oh eight nine point eight. Okay, make a motion to send two people. Trusty McFetrich and the secretary of manager.
Mary.
And the mayor?
No, no.
Mary.
Mary.
Oh, oh, Mary, oh, there's the mayor. Okay.
Let me see, if I go, how much extra is it gonna cost?
I told you you could go.
It would be fourteen seventy-five extra for you to go.
Do you want to go?
That'll be expensive.
I told him he should go.
It is, but you should go.
Cause he'd be going on his own, he'd be, he'd be rooming on his own, he'd prefer sharing room.
You should.
He'd like to share room, but if he.
No, come on, sir, thank you very much for the offer. Okay, have a motion, have a second, have a second?
Second.
If there's no further discussion?
There is some further discussion here.
So why don't, why do you not want to go?
So would you like to go, or would you rather not go?
No, I would rather not go. I didn't find a lot of things that I would be uh, influenced by looking at the agenda, although there is plenty of things for them to do.
Okay.
But thank you.
He already knows all that.
Roll call please.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
I wanted so much to grab mine, but you were good this time.
Okay, thank you, all business, uh, emergency generator purchase, I'm talking to Mike. In talking to Mike, we've decided that we will put this off until we flush.
Let go of washing period.
And we wanna see if the plant will keep up with us, with the needs as we are flushing.
Yeah.
And run the generator then to see if it satisfies the needs that we, that we think we're going to have. If it doesn't, then we will have to come back and consider a different generator, but right now, I think it would, I.
I think it's a great idea.
I have talked about this, I don't know if Mike agrees with me or not, I don't know if Woody agrees with me or not. But I can't see a power outage that lasts more than a day or two. We have, with that generator that we have, we have enough to run the pumps and we have enough to run the distribution pumps and the well pumps. We can keep water going to the, to the tanks. To me, if you're, if you're out of power for a day or two days, we have enough water in those tanks. Soft water already processed in those two tanks, that what we're gonna pump, a couple hundred thousand gallons, is not gonna make a whole hell of a lot of difference. So I would like to see first if we really need to spend fifty or sixty thousand dollars to buy a generator.
Smart move, I like it.
Okay. Alright, one hundred and ten Church Street, boarding of the windows, doors, that has been completed. I, I think the contractor did a very good job, it looks good.
It does look good.
Uh, and he is, uh, his payment is on the one. Wastewater treatment plan blowers, uh, again, we are still looking at information to come in. But sooner rather than later, the I and I study, we've already talked about that. About the payment's going to be withheld here until we get more information and we get something that we can, some concrete information that we can move forward on here, and especially with the blowers. The contamination cleanup with the state contractor. We have a meeting here tomorrow morning at ten thirty with D E C and with the contractor that the state has, has uh, put under contract. And to talk about this, and I think what we're finding with my conversation with the D E C, Mr. Mulvey, last week. Is that they have decided, or they have realized, I guess decisions not process. They have realized that this is going to be a very expensive proposition, with everything that you're going to need to do. So what they're looking for is some help from the village. Some help in the sense that we bank this out here so that the water flows away from the building. And change our downspouts so that we, again, move the water away from the foundation, so that it's not. They will be back, and the plan right now is to go back down in the cellar to take some more test pores down there to see how deep this contamination is. They wanna change either the location or the depth of our, of our sump pump down there. That seems to be the, the, where most of this contaminants are coming boiling up, or whatever terminology you wanna use. My question to them tomorrow, and, and ask if I forget, is what are they gonna do with this stuff? Where is that stuff that's coming out of the sump hole, where is that going to go? It goes into the wastewater system?
It's diluted, it gets diluted with all, everybody's water pumped out and it goes, it'll go to the wastewater, go through our plant. When it gets diluted, it's, it's uh, it.
Does it end up, does it attach to the solid waste material, or does it continue through the processing, so that some of this is gonna end up going back to the river?
Solution for pollution is dilution, and that's what.
Okay, so we can, we can clarify that tomorrow.
Being D E C, he can tell you, you know.
Yeah.
Um.
So we can get that clarification tomorrow?
The only thing is, if they're, I know they want us to slope this, we're gonna have to put some asphalt down here.
Yes.
Both sides, and if we asphalt the front, what are we gonna do later, they come back and tear all that new asphalt out? We still have a water line we're thinking about putting in, I don't know how, I don't, we're gonna throw them anyway.
Maybe we could do this in all, in one fell swoop here. Dig this out, this is all gonna come out, I think we realize that now. Their concern is the foundation of this building. They're gonna go back down in the cellar and they're gonna do something with that sump hole, and then they're gonna seal that floor. They're gonna put fans down there to take the aroma, if you will.
They've got one four-inch radon fan now piped out, and then they want for a big booster fan, so in the spring, if we do have, when it's around us now, we get the bad vapors, we can put the booster fan on. I think it's a six inch.
They wanna seal up those cracks in the cellar floor and, and go, after they do the test porings to find out to extend. Then they're gonna come out here, well, the question was, one, can we help with the excavation? And I told the D E C representative that no, we cannot, we don't have time, we don't have the people, we don't have the equipment to do this. So, I mean, again, it's, it's, I, I think it's going to be very expensive. The second question is, do we have a place to store the hot soil? Uh, we have no place in the village to store that. He rec, he asked about the, the open area behind the water, down at the water plant, you know, in that bag, I said, he said, I'm looking at that with Google Earth. And I see it's open there, I said, well, we need to check your Google Earth, because there's now a filtration plant there, and the access is not there anymore.
Plus you don't want it down there, that's where I was there.
Right.
Go out there.
Right.
They'd be all out.
So it's gonna have to get hauled away, which is very expensive. So, I think they, I, I think this is not a superfund issue. So I don't know how much, if any water or money is set aside, they're gonna take care of this, the controller's office said, yes, we will do this. So they're, they're trying to find a way to lessen their expenses.
Of course.
But they're gonna have to take care of this.
I know some of the borings that was down twelve feet, was, was down in the soil twelve feet, such a lot of material to take out. And I don't know.
How far would it go?
They got, they gotta figure their limitations, cause they did borings from here all the way down the street.
Well, they, according to the D E C representative, they stop at that side of the driveway out there. They're not going down the street. All their containment and all their decon, decontamination is gonna be right here, that's it. I said, well, you can still, take a couple shovelfuls of dirt down here, between here and the telephone company, where we've had a number of breaks.
They did borings, all the way out.
They did, and in fact, the, the technician that did the borings said. He had a sample on his workbench and cut it open and had to back away because of the spell whistle strike. It exceeds many industrial limits, not just residential, it exceeds the industrial limits. So, it'll be an interesting conversation tomorrow.
Yeah.
To say the least. But I think, I have to say that the D E C representative up here is very concerned. And wants to do whatever is necessary to get this remedied. He's very concerned about the general health effects of this contamination, and he wants to see it done correctly. I think is from, the limits are being set from up above. The bank, as he calls it. So. Alright, so that's where that contamination issue is, grant for trees.
That's me, so I have reached out twice and not made a connection, so I have nothing to add to that, we have to the end of this month, which is fast approaching, but.
Well, that's a minimum of fifteen, no, eleven thousand?
I can't remember what the minimum was on it.
I think.
Hold on. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot, I think it's eleven.
Remember looking at that, the minimum, and there's, there's distances from the river, from the water source? I forget what that is, but it was, for some reason, the eleven thousand dollar minimum grant.
Right, that's the minimum grant, right, we wanted to find out with our, um. You know, along our river there, how close we can go.
Right.
Um, to it, and I, I don't have that answer yet, so.
And I think the concern that was, was talked about is how the river freezes and if we have to go through the process again like we did last year. Uh, what effect that would have on, on trees that were planted close to the riverbank.
Right.
If you could put them up in the playground, it would be great. If there was.
Right, how far we can do this, right, that would be the ultimate, what we want.
You know, I mean, you could put a couple, you could put some down in Villarreal Park, but. Further down you go, towards the bolt launch some more.
I have it on my, my desk at work, cause I keep trying.
Where the bench is, you could probably put half a dozen or more up on that little hall.
Yeah, I assume it'll get up there.
Right.
And then even around on the, you know, on the side of the wastewater driveway there.
Yeah.
Depends on the distance that we should go from the river.
Right.
Okay.
To qualify for, that's our question. I'll try again tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright, so, Mr. Mulvey will be here at ten thirty tomorrow, uh, along with the contractors, which we can address those questions to them. As to what this contamination thing is going to be, I will contact the engineers. I will contact the engineers again tomorrow to express our, our desire for more information. And that the payment is being, was tabled until the next board meeting. With the idea that we will get the information before that point. And that will give us a little bit of time to go through that information on the I and I. That looks a little too complicated for me to understand, but nonetheless. Mike knows.
We've got a, also, we've got tank inspection tomorrow.
You got what?
Tank inspection, maybe around ten o'clock for our water tanks, that's our, our complimentary inspection coming.
Oh, is that, is that Stockroth Store?
Yeah.
Good, I'd like to say hello to Charlie if he's here.
I don't want to be him, but like, the other fellow called me today, he's supposed to be here at nine, he can be around ten, so.
Okay.
They're gonna inspect multiple of them.
Alright. So, ladies and gentlemen, if there's no more business, entertaining motion to adjourn.
It's almost.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.